We've got three here, so we'll call the workshop to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Copeland is absent. James Burton.
Here.
Ken Jones is absent. Jeff Gard.
Here.
Malina Meyer, absent. Ann Schaefer, absent. David Allison.
Here.
James Wies is absent. That is not a quorum of counsel, but okay to continue for a work session.
Okay, so our work session topic tonight is 2019 budget discussions. Alan?
What I did for tonight is I went back through all of the funds and recalculated some of the revenues and expenditures. James, I'm assuming you have this copy with the green highlights?
Yeah, I've got it.
All of the changes that I did for this evening are located in the green highlights. For example, under taxes, line 13, you can see that I went from $7,000 to $22,000, which is a better average than taking 16 and 17 into account. Paying the raw tax, same sort of exercise there. On November 7th, it is my intent to bring a pretty complete version of the budget to you, not with all the narratives, but you will go to John. He will make his adjustments to it, and you'll have a pretty complete package because there's still a couple of things that have to be calculated in this budget. What I'm trying to point out tonight is, as I said last time, I don't think it would take us too much of an effort to get to a balanced budget, and that's what I'm trying to portray to you tonight. So you can see with under taxes, our income is down about $400,000, a little less, $300,000. And that's due primarily to the loss of the motor fuel tax, the adjustment on sales tax, and so that equates to a smaller amount. Noting again that we lift the property tax monetary amount the same, and that will affect the mill levy and what people pay, actually. So, and then on licenses and permits, you can see that those stayed the same. I've highlighted raw fish tax at $800,000 because I would like to note, I don't really want to say this, but there is the ability, if you desire, to make an adjustment to that $800,000 number. Our goal was to have that budgeted lower, the backdoor budgeting philosophy that I talked about where we spend less than we make and we have some available the next year for projects or for expenses that were unanticipated. If you go down the list to the utility cooperative refunds, we've adjusted that a little bit based upon some historical averages in '16 and '17. Leases and rents, everything has stayed pretty much the same. Law enforcement stayed the same. You notice that in the state jail contract that we have gotten a little bit more money. It's gone up a little bit here and there. We are trying to position ourselves to really be able to gather any refunds that we can. We're doing a lot of the ACO monitoring stuff, so we're, I think we're faring very well there instead of going in the other direction. We've gone up, albeit just a little bit. Private motor vehicles, no changes there. You know, and I'll say that, you know, in many of these categories, we put numbers in there based upon historical averages, but, you know, in some of them, you just have no idea what's going to happen at the end of the years. It's smaller amounts than the raw fish tax, but still can be very unpredictable. And most of these categories between DMV and planning, you know, they're not a lot of money, but they're, we really don't know what's going to drive those numbers. Recreation apartment, you can see, starting at line 78, if you have lines. We adjusted the bidarchy entrance fees a little bit. Historically, it's been 69, 66, and then we did 60 last year, so we're adjusting up a little bit to closer to a historical amount, even though it's a little bit lower. The pool revenue, same thing. Still trying to be conservative on that. The next area, sale of property, you can see that green highlighted is $30,000. We anticipate selling a vehicle, and that was moved from another line item to that line item, so that's why it increased by $20,000 because we anticipate the sale of a vehicle. The interfund transfers in, line 104. Again, we went from 12% across the board to 11%, decreasing revenue there by $51,000. You know, in this effort to keep everybody's costs down, you know, I think it's important to try to reduce wherever we can. Is there?
Do we know what those allocated costs actually cost? The general fund, or, you know, because they're enterprise funds, they should be paying for themselves, whether, you know, whether they're all fair and equal is up for debate because I know like the harbor does their own billing and things like that, so maybe they shouldn't all be equal, but do we have any idea? Or is it just kind of a random number we picked out to reduce their costs? You know, like, for example, the garbage, we raised 5%, but then you lowered their allocated costs by 1%, so, you know, the true cost isn't really known, I guess. They're just kind of reducing to reduce so that we don't have to raise that as much, or?
No.
Is there a reason behind that?
I think the reasoning for me behind it is to leave more money in their budgets that they can use for their mission, you know, whether that's the harbor, the refuse, or whatever. For example, this year, you know, with the 5% increase, I think that the issue here is even with the 5% increase, we're not, we don't have any capital money. So this is an effort to reduce costs wherever we can. I think the administrative costs are based upon insurance and a variety of human resources and all the things that we take care of, and I couldn't tell you whether that number has been actually calculated to a net, but I think it's pretty close to what kind of value we give back to them. And in fact, you know, depending, even though the number may be lower, the outright number, the percentage based upon the budget is different than that number. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I guess my point is they're enterprise funds, and they should be paying for themselves, and if, you know, depending on what the costs are, is really what they should ought to be paying. But it shouldn't be upon the general property taxpayer, or, although property taxpayer pays all of those other fees as well, but they might not pass those on to their renter or whatever, like they might pass the others on to. So anyway, you know, if you use garbage, you should pay for garbage if you...
Yeah, I think in this case, for example, use human resources is an easy example because then if, let's say the harbor wanted to do a recruitment, and they had to go through that recruitment themselves as a general fund, we would have to charge them for that particular recruitment. And I think those kinds of things can get away from you, get out of hand, so I think in this instance, we're charging an across-the-board administrative fee that covers everything that we do. So...
All we're doing is we start going down the rabbit hole and trying to figure out exactly what this, exactly what that, exactly what that is. We're just adding another pile to that to try to figure out what's happening. So...
I guess bottom line is I'm not in favor of reducing it. If we got away with it last year, then keep charging those enterprise funds to the general fund.
Understand. Understand.
I don't disagree. I think we're just robbing Peter to pay for it, moving the money from one pile to another.
Well, again, what my thought was to have a little bit more money by raising the percentage and reducing the administrative costs. The idea is to have, you know, a few more dollars to repair finger floats instead of...
But if we don't increase revenues anyplace, we've not really increased our ability to do anything.
Understand. Would you go to other, do you want me to respond to that some more?
Anytime you'd like.
Well, it's a real philosophical thing, as much of the budget is, and, you know, I said this when I first arrived, there's as much philosophy in this as there is actual numbers. I think what we, ideally what we do is we would reduce the administrative costs or raise them to compensate the general fund for the work that we do. I think that's a fair number. I don't view it as a particular hardship on the budget, although the number is smaller. The real issue here is not the $51,000 in administrative costs, it's the philosophical point of where do we want the budget to be in terms of the number? Do you want to be a $10.1 million government, or a $10.6, or a $10.7? And then once that decision is made, how do we get to that number? So, you've got to address that part of it as well.
Ideally, it's whatever we decide we're doing, we need to do it appropriately, and we need to do it well. Because right now, we're, our budget we've got now is spending every projected windfall dollar we get. We've got big expenses projected coming up down at the harbor, and all we're doing is draining our fuel tank, our financial fuel tank, when we've got big stuff coming up on the horizon we want to do.
Yeah, and to some degree, those are almost separate issues for the harbor. I know those are big things that we want to do, and as an enterprise fund, they have to raise their revenue independently. But I think, again, I'll go back to the very basic of this. My belief is that the very basic decision is, do you want to fix the harbor? And then we'll figure out pieces...
I was just, the harbor, for example.
Yeah.
We've got landfill costs that we're not keeping up with. We've got maintenance on equipment costs. Any type of piece of equipment breaks down, and we've got to buy a new piece of equipment. We've got to turn around and go to the permanent fund to do it.
Yeah.
Jeff, use the mic, please.
Okay.
Well, and again, this is, this is a problem, or an issue that has been created over the course of many, many years, and that's why my position is that we must raise our rates 5% across the board over the next five years to give us a fighting chance that we won't have to rob the permanent fund on a regular and ongoing basis.
Or...
In the next five years, we're going to have to if we want to keep pace. We're just going to have to, and do our best to pay it back. There's no way around it. You can't, you can't, if you don't fund it, and the truck goes to heck, and you have to borrow the money from somewhere else, you're paying interest to somebody else. If we raise the rates and buy the truck over the course of the next three to five years, three years, I'm thinking, we can pay back all the money that we borrowed with interest and have ourselves on track to be able to afford the next one. But it's...
I'm not arguing with not maintaining our stuff. I'm not arguing about not maintaining our stuff.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, we have made no motion forward into becoming more solvent and fixing our financial picture. The only thing we do to look at a financial picture is we turn around and say, oh, we're short, we're a permanent fund.
Yeah.
And there are other steps we can take. We don't have to do it all at once. I mean, we can't really do it all at once. It's been a problem we've dug, a hole we've dug over a number of years, and it's not going to, we're not going to get out of it overnight. We can't just keep cutting the budget and...
Well, I agree, and as I began this year's budget, my first question is, what level do you want to be at? So, right now, we have about $10.8 million, so I'm trying to give you the picture of what that looks like in all the funds with a 5% increase as an acceptable step in a five-year plan going forward. Sometimes, as you know, those steps don't actually go as planned. In this case, the adjustments, which '19 was our adjustment year in the strategic plan, the adjustment is to count the SRS funds for this year at 580 and raise the other rates 5%. So that's the real adjustment in this budget, and I don't think that's, I don't think that's too far away from sustainability. It's not too far away.
Okay.
Because we're, as you know, the very first year, we were over $1 million in adjustment. Then last year it was less, this year it's even less. And though we're counting some different revenue sources, the philosophical part is getting us to sustainability, and we would be even more sustainable had the voters not rejected the two revenue sources. But, so we're readjusting, we've got to do SRS temporarily, and then we'll go forward. We've got to have some more conversations about what our revenue sources are going to be, and then add those to the mix.
So Jeff, what do you want to say? Do you want to say that you'd rather it be an 11.5?
No, I'm not arguing about the 11%. But all I'm thinking...
No, 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 I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about, do you not want a $10.8 million budget? That's what Alan's been trying to ask. Do you want an 11?
No, I understand.
Do you want an 11.1?
My thought of here was that we have this machine that's the city that takes care of all the stuff we need to take care of here. And we haven't been funding our maintenance, we haven't been, we've just been running on mold hire for a long time. And I expected to be making maybe bigger baby steps than we're making, but when we're talking about to balance a budget, we need to take and adjust what our raw fish tax number is. To make it balance, we need to use our SRS money that we hadn't been budgeting before. There, we're going no place. We're just making dollars on paper and moving them around, not really solving any of the problems.
Understand. The $800,000 is not an adjustment in the entrance fees, fish tax fees. I'm saying that you could do that in a reasonable fashion in this particular budget. And I would, my position would be that we are making progress, and I think we're making good progress. I think next year, we won't even be having this conversation. I know, I know, that's kind of funny, but I think...
True, some of us might not be.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think we're making progress all the time, and when you get to where we are now, last year, at the end of the day, we cut a lot of stuff out that is back in. For example, travel and 2% increase for staff across the board because we've got to renegotiate another contract with the IVW. So if you just keep that...
I'm not arguing any of that. I know that we're making, we're making advances there, but it's where we're taking the money from and how we're doing it with the money.
Yeah.
With budgeting for windfall dollars that we're not even sure we're getting. I mean, it's a 95% chance we're getting them.
We know, I think I know with certainty, isn't that taxi moron or something? I think I know with certainty that the SRS funding is in place. I've talked to the people at the state. I know that is going to be coming to us in '19. So that's the reason that is in here, because I do know that. The other thing is the fish tax. The fish tax is a very, very conservative approach to the fish tax number, but it's not out of character to adjust that number a little bit because it's all, it's all very pliable, and it can't be written in stone, and I don't know how to, I don't know how to make it written in stone. But let's just assume, for the sake of tonight's discussion, that we're going to be a $10.8 million government. Okay? 10.8 allows us to compensate staff, it allows us to do some capital project, it allows for us to do a number of things that we didn't do last year, and we did even less the year before. And I think that's going in the right direction.
I understand, but we're doing it, we, our big push on this is to do it with, to be self-sustaining on this, start working towards self-sustaining. And that, when we're starting to take windfall dollars and building big chunks of our budget around windfall dollars, that aren't something we have any control over, they're coming from the state or the beds or whoever.
Yeah.
And we know how transient those dollars are. That's where I'd like to see us make some advances.
Yeah, and that has to come with revenue sources from other places, if that's the direction you want to go. So based upon what I have at my disposal and where I think philosophically we want to go, this is what I have to work with.
Okay, and I'm not trying to...
No, 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 I understand. We've got to, we've got to sort it out. So if you look at other revenue, I have in miscellaneous revenue, $75,000. We're not sharing as many positions as we wanted to with the hospital. The other piece going down under the Cordova Center revenue, been going up every year, so we think that we're going to hit 55, so we adjusted that a little bit. Line 120 under state debt service reimbursement. See, now, that's, that's not considered a windfall, that's just an adjustment on what we believe the revenue is going to be. So we still think at this time, under current knowledge, it's going to be 926. And so...
Is there any way for the, for the next time we get one of these, we can get year-to-date stuff?
Yeah.
Because we're just, we're off of last year's projected.
Yeah, and in some of these categories, the year-to-date is just, it's not as reliable as you think, but we'll get, I'll get you one. I'll get one sent out to you soon as possible.
We can just do it when we do the next one.
Who was it that joined us on the phone? Or did we lose James?
Maybe we lost James.
No, I'm later, I don't know.
It'd be, I don't know, somebody joined in or not, just wanted for the record to...
Yeah, Kenny.
Okay, thank you, Kenny.
And so then we go to, you know, to start the expenditures. We've put some funds back in, as you can see, that in '18, or in, yeah, in '18, that many of the categories, starting at line 123 with the city council, I'll go down a little bit late. What we're doing is we're just putting dollars back in that were previously unfunded, even though there was no money in those line items for '18 and so forth. When you see the final budget for the end of the year, that you'll see that there's expenditures in all those line items, and they have the little brackets around them because we overspent the line item. You know, some of that travel had to take place, and so we made journal entries to cover those. Under the city clerk, you can see that it's the same scenario. There are a lot of underfunded and unfunded line items. We know for certain on the assessor's contract, for example, that line 152, that their fees are going to go up to $20,000. We've already approved that. There is a huge change in the purse formula. Went from 3.9% to 5.2% or something like that, so you'll see a lot of those. Much of these line items are just associated with the 2% increase proposed for staff. If you go down to the city manager's line item, everything is pretty static, or the mayor's line item, everything's pretty static. There, we've added a little bit, but those aren't large amounts, $1,800. The city manager's line item has not changed a whole lot. The 2% would be for the one staff member other than myself that's included in that category, and I've adjusted some of those line items downward as well since the last time we presented to reduce the costs a little bit. So you can see the costs are, you know, they're less than 2,017 and pretty close to what last year was. Finance, same story, $8,000 increase, a lot of it is associated with the purse relief. You can see that's a chunk at about seven of the $8,000. Planning department expenses beginning on line 203. Again, the same story as that you're either replacing some travel, giving a conference opportunity, increases compared to the purse changes. And by the way, I would say even without a 2% salary increase, the purse cost would go up because the formula has changed this year to reflect that 3.9 and 5.2%. We've put some extra money in for professional fees and legal printing because we do have extra projects going this year, just a little bit. But you'll see later on that we have additional monies available to us because we're doing the COW Plan, we're doing the bill grant, we're doing the turbine grants, we're doing a lot of other stuff that's really going to require some assistance as we go forward. Plan commission, just a little bit of money, $500. Motor vehicles. Now, all of these categories, this is really a bottom-line category for motor vehicles, law enforcement, and dispatch communications because they're all lumped in and then they get dispersed by formula through these three categories. So DMV hasn't changed much from last time, but here's a big change in law enforcement. Our goal in law enforcement, you can see that we went down about $5,000 from the '18 budget. The reason we went down there is, and Mike is on vacation, so if I don't show up at the next meeting, it's because I'm in jail. We have taken out the funding for one police officer. We're still funding four, the chief, four dispatchers, but here's what we did. You'll see in the overtime category, we have that at $60,000. If during the course of the year, we have the opportunity to find a police officer that fits, we'll have enough money in the overtime to begin the employment of that police officer as a fifth officer, if that's the policy direction that the council wants to go. So that number gives us a little bit of flexibility. Some of the communication costs are increased with more staff. You have to have, you know, a little bit more professional development, cut the dues and subscriptions down, and that may have to go back up because I think the number last year was 10, but that's not really magazines and those kinds of things. There's a lot of electronic costs in that, that number. There's, it's a lot of electronic costs in that, that number. Um, we have money in there for ongoing recruiting efforts, uh, in anticipation that we would find another police officer. And the vehicle parts and repairs, the numbers have been down the past few years, so we're trying to hit a happy place there at 7,500, so we made a change there.
We've decreased our staffing by about 20% there, and we've gone up almost 10% in costs in the police department.
Well, again, Leif, if you want to go up to the top, there were, um, here's the reason that it looks like that, or is, you know...
15,000 is certainly, I mean, that's a big one, or everybody's going to harp on it.
No, no, I underst- I understand, there are going to be costs, and there are going to be the 2% stuff, and that, but 10% is the biggest one I've seen.
Yeah, well, if you look at 18, 460 and 455, there's only, there's a 5,000 dollar decrease in full-time salaries and wages. That's because we're operating with four officers and a chief now. So we're going to continue that philosophy, but we have put additional money in overtime to allow for that. And that's, between that and the purse relief, that's where the majority of these changes come from. Now, if we find an officer, we won't have to immediately appropriate any funds to get that officer started. But in the case where the office, we don't find an officer, we have a little bit more money to cover overtime, but there will be savings there. So we're really trying to, to hedge our bets by making this change. Um, and again, Mike has been gone, and I haven't even asked him about this, so I'm, I'm out on a limb with this myself.
But, so it takes us half a year to get, what have we spent on overtime going forward this year, running four officers?
Well, you can see what we're running here, 66, 47. We're probably, you know, I, I don't know the number, I don't have it in front of me, but it's higher than 10,000 for sure.
Yeah, so I don't, my, my question is this, is how much of that 60 is really going to be there, if we go very much a year?
Again, we're, we're trying to have as much coverage as we can and keep the overtime down. This, I, I don't know what the practice was in prior year, but, you know, we're trying to keep the overtime reduced. And obviously, with more officers, your overtime number is less. I just don't have the number in front of me, but I could go get it.
We're going to run out of time here.
We are.
Minutes, if we want to talk, uh, philosophy for a minute, if it, if, if that's more viable to you.
Yeah, I think it is.
We're going to have to go through this line by later.
I just want to, at, at the end of this, what you see is, we're 10,000 off in this budget. We're 10,000 short, and that's because I made an adjustment today. But from a philosophical standpoint, I think where you want to go is you want to, you've got to increase fees, and you've got to increase le- revenue to a point where you feel comfortable that we're doing everything, and obviously, where we feel comfortable. For example, the 5% increase in refuse allows us to purchase, uh, bear-proof lids for every trash container owned by the city. Lots have money for public education available to us, which is what we talked about last fall, and that will happen over the winter. So, those are the things that allow you to do that. Without any money in the budget at all for that, it, it really doesn't matter what we all want to do and what we all want to think, because we don't have any money to pay for any of it. And that's, that's what I'm trying to get with this budget, and I think, I think we're pretty darn close.
James, you got any wrap-up comments regarding, we've got to go to into our public hearing here in a few minutes, so, um, Alan's looking for philosophical thoughts, 10.8, 10.0, 11.7? What's your thoughts?
Um, no, not right now. I'm going to, I'll, I'll probably send something later on email-wise, I've got some ideas, but we should probably keep moving on.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, council member Jones?
No comment.
Okay, then, I'll give you my quick rundown. I, uh, my philosophy, I guess, is, um, several-fold. I think we should be at a 10 million general fund budget, and I, and I don't include capital items in that. Um, and I would consider, you know, 100,000 dollars for repairs of, um, streets equipment capital. So I would pull out some capital items and, and consider those separately adding to that 10 million. I want to see us find money to do the stairs over here and complete this, this project. I want to see us find, um, 20,000 somewhere in there to add to the chambers, um, budget, so that we can continue marketing Cordova. We don't have enough to fund a full-time position for that, but, uh, I think they're in a position to where they say they can, uh, for another 20,000, they can increase their visibility quite a bit, so I'd like to do that. Um, I'd just like to remind council that our current general fund balance is pretty much all allocated. Um, you got that report from, from Alan a few weeks ago. Um, you know, if you pull out of that, the, the amount that the harbor has in their permanent fund, and that the closing fees for the landfill, and the, um, everybody else's, um, funds, the ambulance fund, uh, you know, by the time you, you add up all of those allocated things, we've got minus in our general fund. Um, so at some point in time, we need to put money back in that. And, and that said, our budget does not have to be a balanced budget. Uh, we just have to spend less than the revenue, and that's exactly what it says in our, in our code, is that we can't spend more than revenue, but it says nothing in there about having a balanced budget. So, I, I don't think we have to spend everything that we anticipate. I think we should budget for all the things we know we're going to get. Uh, you know, the screw of schools' funds, of course, those are all alloc- allocated to the schools and the roads anyway, but the equivalent of that, um, it should be, uh, the money should be in our budget as a revenue, but I don't think we have to spend it all. Uh, we're going to have things throughout the year that, you know, we need to do this, and, oh, we could take that out of our general fund reserve. So, no, not really, because that's all allocated already. Uh, I think we need to build up some, some more unallocated money there. So anyway, that's my, um, rough and dirty philosophy. I think if our general fund, that we can get it to 10 million, I think we can, we can use that additional money for capital items such as these stairs, and, uh, there are several things in this budget that I would consider capital and, and consider adding to that 10 million, as far as those capital items. But, uh, anyway, that's where I'd like to, to see us be, and I don't think we need to try to spend every nickel that we've got coming in, and, and we do need to find other revenue sources, but, uh, once again, I, I can't see getting those from the permanent year-round residents. Uh, we need to find a way to, to diversify our, our revenues. And we're doing that through, through our, um, visitor industry somewhat, and I think we need to support that, uh, a little more, since it doesn't sound like we're talking about hiring another full-time person here to do that. So, uh, I think the chamber is best suited to help us out with that. So, anyway, that's my shortened, dirty philosophy, last words. That's my regard.
Um, I think I said most of what I had to say. Um, my only thing is, instead of just pulling a number out of the air and say, this is what our budget's going to be, we need to look at what it costs to deliver the services we've got, and if we want to start cutting a budget, since the budget we've been running that's over 10 million dollars does not fund maintenance and depreciation on anything. We need to figure out what we want to get rid of and cut if we want to have a smaller budget. Whatever we decide we want to do, we just need to do it appropriately.
Sounds good. Okay, that being said, our workshop is adjourned. So we have a public hearing scheduled. Do you need a minute, or are you good to go? Okay. Call the city council, public hearing of October 17th, to order, 6:45 PM, uh, Cordova Center community room. A and B, uh, go call, please.
Mayor Copeland is absent. James Burton?
Here.
Ken Jones?
Here.
Jeff Gard?
Here.
Melina Meyer is absent. Ann Schaefer is absent. David Allison?
Here.
And James Wiese is absent. That's a quorum of council.
Okay, we've got a public hearing on the agenda. Ordinance 1171, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the transfer of 269,000 dollars from the general reserve fund, permanent fund, to the refuse enterprise fund for the purchase of a refuse truck. Any comments from the public? Single line rushing up to speak. Uh, guys on the phone, there's approximately seven people, eight people in the audience, mostly staff. Um, so, anyway, I don't see anybody coming up to testify, so we will take a recess until 6:57 on the clock here, that's six minutes. That's not a problem, we will do that.